Amazing team. People that have seven quarterbacks.
You good?
Bet it should happen. Amazing.
Six P M. We'll call this regular village board meeting in order if you'd all please join me here in a moment's silence. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pledge a big goal.
Trustee Nice. Trustee Try. Trustee Ferguson.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Gerger.
Here.
Trustee Fletcher.
Here.
Village President Kinsey, present.
Any public announcements this evening? Here you go. Any public comment on agenda topics? Ain't got no old business. Item one under new business is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the city of Springfield related to a foundment of vehicles. Can I motion bring this to the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charles made a motion. I'm second. Second by trustee Fletcher. Uh, this is extending an expiry entry in the city of Springfield with recent completion. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. So moved. Item two is resolution approving the purchase of a truck for the water and sewer department and rescinding, resolution thirty-two twenty-five. Can I motion bring this to the floor?
Make the motion.
Trustee Ferguson made a motion. Second.
I'll say.
By trustee Gerger. The, the truck purchased that we authorized at the last meeting got recalled the day after we approved their purchase. Uh, so we will not buy those. Uh, instead, this is the replacement vehicle.
That's great.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's clear.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee... Charo.
Yes.
Item number three is an ordinance approving the financing for the purchase of the truck for the water and sewer department. Can I motion approve?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charles made a motion. I'm second.
Second.
Second by trustee Ferguson. Financing for said vehicle. Cause we didn't use the loan for the recall payment.
I'd say I'd test. He'll get a little right for us.
How would nobody cooperate?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clark?
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Item number four, resolution approving the purchase of a truck for the park, this apartment and rescinding thirty-three point five. Can I motion bring this to the floor?
I'll make that.
Trustee Gerger's made a motion.
Second.
Second by trustee Ferguson. Same story, different job. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clark?
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Item number five is an ordinance approving the financing for the purchase of the truck for the parks apartment. Can I motion bring this to the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charles made a motion. No, I'm second.
I'll say.
Second by trustee Gerger. Same story, different loan. Any further discussion? Mr. Clark?
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Item number six is an ordinance approving salaries for the village manager and the village police chief. And police chief. Can I motion bring this to the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charles made a motion. No, I'm second.
Second.
Second by trustee Gerger. Uh, last two salaries that we have to set every year are, are every term is that, village manager and police chief have to be set by ordinance. Uh, they're recommended as four years salary schedule that aligns with their, with their office. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clark?
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Item number seven is an ordinance approving bid for the road project. Can I motion to bring this to the floor? Trustee Fletcher's made a motion. No, I'm second. Second by trustee Charo. This is the bid on Bristol and Hastings work that we had programmed. Jim, want to say how excited you are about this bid?
Very excited. We'll go over any cheering, um, updates if you'd like. Um, but, uh, received excellent bids on that. And, uh, actually looking to do more work, uh, going to the upper limit on the, uh, what we had budgeted on that. So able to do the like, uh, this number sixty thousand dollars worth of work. So we're either picking on the road that's in the neighborhood, um, you know, to advance that, or we'll just defer that funding to next year and do larger project with these term up beginning next year. So it just depends on how far south we'll challenge it.
So, yeah, our bids are fifty-four thousand dollars. I think it's realistic. Good bid. Any further discussion? Awesome. Let's clear.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
And yes, trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Item number eight, an ordinance approving a change in zoning from R one to P one for the property located in eight fifteen West Walnut. Can I motion to bring this to the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gerger's made a motion. Second by trustee Charo. Uh, zoning board held their public hearing and voted all in favor of recommending improved zoning request, uh, from property from R one to P one. Have any more to add on this?
The property was originally some, uh, P one. Uh, I think a previous owner changed it to R one when they may have split something off. The current residents would like to change it back to R one. Not exactly sure all the details of what they're gonna do with the property, but an R one or a P one do not allow a business to be run on that piece of property. So, uh, there was no opposition to the street zoning change and, uh, that's all we've got to, to act on.
Hearing none. Mr. Clark?
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Item number nine, ordinance approving the Plumber Boulevard Road project. Can I motion bring this to the floor?
We can.
Trustee Fletcher. Second by trustee Gerger. Not that substantially, but also wondering if you're going to allow us to also M F T funding in the future years to be reprogrammed for additional work elsewhere. Uh, any further discussion? And Jim's gonna update us on timelines. All of that.
Building needs not any for waiting for you. Building needs not many for your aid.
I'm nervous.
It's been overhired already.
Oh, we'll see if I deliver.
Any further discussion?
You will.
Mr. Clark?
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Item ten, it, or, yes, item ten, or is it?
Yeah.
I missed it. Yeah. Item ten is resolution for improvement under the highway code for Plumber Boulevard. Motion bring this to the floor.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Charo. Second by trustee Gerger. This is the I dot resolution that's required.
So when they did the resolution for the R B I funds, they approved the R B I funds. We know we had the N F T funds listed on that, but I dot said let's defer the approval to the N F T funds since we need contracts, formal contracts approved. So we know what needs to be allocated for the N F T. So this is just, uh, using the remainder of the R B I funds, which has already been appropriated into resolution. Now we're doing the N F T portion of that to match up with what the bids, uh, what we see for this project to come up with the total funding package.
Further discussion?
Who was the first and the second on that?
I was second.
First, second.
First.
First, Charo.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Clark?
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee, uh, Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Now, item eleven, resolution approving purchase of two police vehicles from Victory Lane. Can I motion bring this to the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charo's made a motion. Second. Second by trustee Fletcher. Uh, two twenty twenty-five Dodge Durangos that we all are not recalled tomorrow. Forty-four thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars each. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clark?
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Item twelve is an ordinance approving the financing for the purchase of said two police vehicles. Can I motion bring this to the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Ferguson made a motion. No, I'm second.
I'll say.
Second by trustee Gerger. Uh, financing will not be four point five, five percent, five years. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clark?
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Motion to bring the consent agenda to the table.
I'll make that.
Trustee Charo's made a motion. No, I'm second.
I'll make that second.
Second by trustee Ferguson. Any questions or discussion regarding warrants for the minutes? Hearing none. Mr. Clark?
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Is there any public comment for any village business at this time? Hearing none. Next village board meeting will be six P M. July twenty-second. No need for an executive session for the board. Take a motion to return the board the portion of this evening's festivities.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charo's made a motion. Second by trustee Fletcher. All in favor?
Aye.
Any standing chair?
We can bring on to the committee of hope. We're good. Can I need the votes?
Trustee Ferguson.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Gerger.
Here.
Trustee Fletcher.
Present.
Village President Kinsey, present.
Any public comments on agenda topics? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to bring the consent agenda to the table?
Make a motion.
Trustee Ferguson has made a motion. Seconded by trustee Fletcher. Any discussion on the consent agenda for, uh, the tenth, the eighth? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
So, no old business, new business. We have the C M T engineering update.
School of engineering.
Jim's got older or you lost your glasses.
He wants it out. We can rate it from air.
Wait, hold it?
Well, that's part. Usually, uh, you know, I hang this at my door at work. It's, uh, usually titled, uh, crap to do. Except I don't use that word. I use something else that, uh, makes things a little bit easier here. But, uh, yes, uh, all things chatted related to engineering. So, uh, without further ado, let's talk about Plumber Boulevard. So, uh, since you, the board has graciously approved the authorization of the project, it can now move forward. So we have the contract documents, uh, prepared by the contractor. We'll get those signed first thing tomorrow. Um, we've got those sitting in Pat's office. So we'll get the signatures on that, get that back to, uh, the state for approval of the board and formal acceptance of the contract. So then we'll officially take the project forward. Had cons, uh, had conversations with the contractor, um, in anticipation of this meeting. And the first thing is like, well, our concrete guys are really far behind. Why do you want this done? I said, well, it's gonna be done. The patching work at minimum will be done by August thirteenth for, uh, start of school. Well, I don't know if we can do that. He said, well, um, it's going to be done by August thirteenth. Well, we're gonna have to bid that out to subcontractor. I said, okay. Uh, well, you know who that is. Subsequently, uh, Rob Kenny getting a call and said, hey, we want to bid on the, uh, uh, Plumber project. I said, well, that was Broton. He goes, well, I can use numbers. I said, okay, well, see if they're gonna use you. Well, I got a call back from Broton today. They said they're gonna use Kenny. In which I talked to Rob Kenny and said, school starts on the thirteenth. They're gonna have it done. He goes, I will have it done. I said, are you gonna join me at the board meeting tonight to express that you're gonna have it done? His reply was, no, I'll let you be here. So, uh, I've been told, reassured that, uh, the patching portion will be done by the thirteenth. Part of school and that will be the most inconvenient labor intensive road block and show everything else. So what's gonna happen is we're gonna mill all the surface off. Kenny's gonna come in, do all the patching, and then it'll just be moving operations with the asphalt caving up for that. So, um, that is our plan. We're going to stick with that plan and, uh, hopefully get, uh, make that happen. So.
Did you say?
We're gonna start on the twenty-eighth at this point. Yes. So by the time contract's good signed and their subcontract gets signed, I said, well, as far as I'm concerned, we can afford as soon as we're able to. Well, lies. And he goes, yeah, we're busy on a bunch of other stuff, but, uh, yes, twenty eighth looks good. So.
And you think that's about a week that they'll have the, you know, only four weeks or?
Two weeks.
Four weeks.
Yes. It'll, it'll be right up to, it'll probably be right up to Tuesday, Paul Maritake's Tuesday night for Wednesday morning.
Fine.
So, uh, we'll be pins and needles all the way through, but, uh, we'll do what we can to facilitate their operations, make it as easy as possible on everyone. But we reiterate it is in the best interest of the contractor, the village, the engineer, and yourselves to get this done by the thirteenth because it will be an absolute.
Now just keep the patching or the?
That'll be the patching. So if you remember on the last section, they had split it up into kind of thirds where they did, you know, right lane shut the traffic over to the outside lane. They did work in the middle and it got a little confusing with where to go and what to do, but they don't want that for the first day of school. So we're gonna push very hard to make that happen.
Jim, once things start, will kids be able to get to school for workouts?
Yes. So full access will be provided, um, you know, to the entrances. We may have to close one entrance and have the other one open.
Well, we just wanna, if, if, if we need to just make adjustments, so that the kids can ease their workouts.
Correct.
We can do that. I mean, they go in on either side of the road.
Correct.
So.
That's a big debt with them, John.
Well, we'll have, one of those weeks will be dead.
So that might as well be.
That'll help one of them whichever. Is it the first week of August this year?
It's first week of August.
Yeah. So at least that week, we'll be good for those guys. So.
Boy, I mean, there's not much traffic out there during the day now. So I mean, a little bit more with, you know, now Woodside being closed and back open. But, uh, still, it's, uh, like I said, it's in everyone's best interest to get this, the patching done by the thirteenth.
Can they start with the school in?
One lane traffic.
No. We'll maintain two lanes. So what they'll do is, you know, shift back and forth. Uh, yes, it will be somewhat, yes, 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 in the two lane section. So, yes. I'm, I'm thinking back to the.
I was trying to figure out where to put the rest of that road.
Yeah, it will be one lane.
Can you start at the school and, and move up?
Can we do what?
Can we start at the end of the school and then go up instead of down or?
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, we'll be, what's in front, most of the patching's kinda through that old ass curb area. So, I mean, there's not much patching like directly in front of the school. I mean, we can hit those first, uh, whatever, um, and work from, you know, east back to west. But, uh, most of the patching is right through there with the townhomes and the, you know, the local.
The cops that they use is high early concrete.
Yep.
Usually sets up in a day sometimes.
So. Yep. Uh, whenever we pay the date before, we can track them down at the following day. That is our plan. Um, Bristol and Hastings, uh, you guys also voted on that. Uh, approval will move forward on that. Uh, Village Cruise have some additional patching they believe that will be done by August first. Uh, you know, Broton has prioritized Plumber Boulevard on that project. They think it'll be closer to September, uh, when they do Bristol and Hastings. And once again, um, you know, with the good bids that we received on that, uh, you know, there's plenty to either extend that project to another location that, uh, you know, Village Cruise can patch some more. We can either do that or, you know, if we find a roadway that doesn't require a patching, but the surface is in terrible condition, you know, we can look at that. Um, or we'll just defer the funds to next year's program and expand that a little.
You guys should know that there's other places that, uh, we would go to if we had a larger amount of money this year. Uh, since it's the extra money that we have, if we keep another patching job right near where the scheduled one in Bristol is, that we don't have to pay for mobilization and stuff. So we'll be, we'll get more bang for our buck. So we haven't forgotten for us to town.
Yeah. So the contractor's willing to do the initial work if it's deranged the project and in the vicinity as opposed to let's load everything up, move to a complete different part of town and unload everything and, you know, have a remobilization on that. So let's, uh, they'll work with us on that if we wanna do the initial work. Uh, Savannah and Walmart, or Savannah and Walnut, we have those plans, um, nearly completed. Uh, those will go to I dot here later this week and for review, uh, addressing accounts that they have. But, uh, looking at putting that out today here later this fall. Uh, Walnut Paragraph.
Put that work company this way.
No, that'll be done this fall. Yeah. That'll be this fall. I mean, it's small project. It's, uh, what we had fifty-five thousand appropriated for it. So it's just, just the intersection there. That's the intersection. So that one will, we'll go quick. It'll be later this fall. Either, uh, late September or early October if something. Uh, Walnut Garbrail, we have a survey scheduled for that, um, over by the Apple Barn, looking at that project. And also, uh, Woodland Trail, doing some Flumby studies on that. We have a survey scheduled, uh, to get those projects moved forward. Uh, been working with Dustin and Parsh Department, um, improvements at football fields, uh, to do some, um, concrete work, sidewalk work, and some drainage work, uh, associated with that. Uh, last week they worked out the locations that they want paved. So we'll plug the other estimates and get that back for the concurrence. Uh, park plans, um, there's fifty thousand dollars appropriated for renewable replacement of bike path in the park. Working with village staff to identify the location on that. Uh, once again, we're probably getting another two hundred feet of improvements done, uh, within the park. Depending on how bids come out, but, uh, just give another section of that and keep chipping away. Uh, the concrete, um, concrete, um, material. Once again, we had to go through I dot under a process for procurement of concrete to do this lane's patching throughout. Uh, we did not receive any bids. That's not abnormal because it's a pain in the butt for a concrete company to supply bids for some open-ended contract. So what happens with no bids, we submit that back to I dot. I dot says, okay, we're fine with that. You did your due diligence. Now you can just call them and get concrete whenever you want, which is cheaper and easier for the village. So that would actually work to help. Other thing that we're looking at coordinating with the village is, uh, improvements along, uh, Firstborn. Um, with the manner of pill two plats, uh, the developer, uh, it was originally on the hook to put in turn lanes along, um, Ford Drive at Firstborn, uh, opted to, uh, relinquish that and use that for roadway repairs, uh, since they have some houses going in now. So we're just trying to figure out what, what the best avenue to get the biggest bang for a buck on that for them doing, um, you know, the work and getting that, uh, improvement made. So, so we'll be getting that done here this year.
Will they just be in front of that spot where their building?
They'll be.
If they're required to do that, we're looking at doing patching from where their property starts, you know, to the west. Going all the way to go to drive and can't fix it all.
So, yeah, so in the east line of their property line, all the way. So just patching in all the bad spots through there. Um, we did a patching survey. It's been what, two years now? Um, so we're gonna lay that out, see if anything else needs to be improved on that. And then just coordinate with, uh, with the developer, with the village crews and just kinda see what the best mix is in terms of getting the biggest bang for a buck and getting that roadway, um, up to stuff so a future roadway can occur.
Is Jim?
Um, well, it's, uh, working with Village Cruise. Uh, we have about fourteen thousand appropriated in concrete for sidewalk. Underneath the, um, general funds, there's about sixty grand for labor to do that work. So a combination of N F T materials with, um, uh, general fund labor and, uh, Street crews pulling together locations and pulling together a bid package for that. So we'll get that worked on this year. And then oil and chip, we've finally got down to the bottom of that one. Um, there's a section of the oil and chip program that the village annexed in a portion of the roadway and took jurisdictional ownership of the roadway. However, I dot's records showed that the roadway was still in the township, so we had to fill out our kinds of paperwork. And let's see, one document had to be three originals, the other had to be five originals, sent to the district engineer to go through their legal department, uh, to get that changed. So they finally approved that. So they're allowing us to spend money on the roadway that was already our roadway. But they didn't think it was our roadway, but it was our roadway. So now they acknowledge that it's our roadway. So we're gonna spend the money on that. So that is being advertised in the, um, contractors bulletin, I dot contractors bulletin, uh, the tenth, the seventeenth. And then we'll have a bid opening on the twenty-second. So we'll see that one come in front of you for the oil and chip program, um, at the next board meeting. And that will be, uh, it's kind of rural areas, Ostmar Road, um, Cover Bridge Road, um, Ford Drive, kind of that portion areas. How the rural areas, so as we're evaluating, not helping to do more than work in town with some oil and chip. Targeted on people towards a, just putting down a binder mix or a higher type payment because people just don't wanna go to chip in town. It's, uh, we're not fair. So that works. Does work. No one likes it. So, but we're looking at, uh, other options, uh, for a higher type payment in town. Um, so kids can ride bicycles, people can walk and, you know, just, you know, always walk and not be scrambled. Kids happy. So, so that's what I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. What's the, can I take a quick single break?
What, are we still on your thunder?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, Warren. So, thank you.
That's all. Thank you. Thunder.
Thunder.
We've been doing upgrades to our internet provider here. We are starting the process of different system. That kinda all started back last year when we, our I T computer hacked. Decided to move along to the new system and everything, all of the, the way up and everything. So we've been doing that, uh, Grants, uh, we've been keeping those all up to date, all filled out. Megan does a great job on that. Dustin has been running around crazy trying to keep all the screws busy, which they all are. And they've been, even working overtime and stuff, getting some of this patching and stuff. And so kudos to them. Trent's been doing, uh, we, we had got a notification from I A A that we needed to be prepared for, uh, electric reduction in case, uh, everybody was in the grid all at one time. And we'd have to shed load and be able to keep all the lights on. So we put together a program and Trent, along with Ryan Slid, moving over it, Roadola, gave it to I A A and they wanted to copy of this and send it to their other communities and stuff. So. Good job, Detroit.
That's an update. I don't want, I want, we go through this process every year in I A A.
But.
In the summer sense, the launch. Notice.
But every summer more generation goes away and they're not getting replaced fast enough. So we were close the other day. We were close. And the cost of purchasing electricity off the market is through the roof. If you have, if you know, angry customers and stuff, they're receiving that on their bills now where ours still stays. So, uh, what else? Your auditors have been here and they've been going through, uh, our inventory and make sure that everything's counted and accounted for. They should be here through the rest of the week. What else, Dustin? Anything? Trent, anything else?
Uh, just, uh, thanks to Chief following his crew and then Chief Self from the fireside. We had a successful weekend.
I was, I was gonna have her kinda give a report on that. He's got all that.
He's got his nose. Dog's still his thunder. Sounds like you're up her.
You're up her.
Didn't rise. I was gonna speak about that. But, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, the strong customer service this weekend was a very successful event. Uh, Mother Ranger did cooperate. Well, she had a little backstab for a few minutes, but, uh, overall it was a very successful event. Um, as Trent alluded to, the fact that we, uh, you know, Springfield was great stuff to grant, uh, the vehicle for us at the command center, uh, which was very helpful. Uh, we had no issues. Um, it was a, like I said, very successful event. So, uh, kudos. Trent does a great job when it comes to, uh, when it comes to instant action plans and so on and such. Something that, you know, years ago, many years ago, whenever we had that type of, you know, in place, like down in paper and what we're gonna do. But, uh, since Trent's been along with that. But since Trent's gone along with that, he developed those incident action plans, which makes things, for us, the end user, you know, makes it very successful. If we don't have an issue, you know, we'll make sure we follow that plan and, you know, follow correctly and know where it's all found and so on. Kudos to Trent.
Have Trent on our staff. It's the energy of most of the county. It really does.
Oh, come on, Trent's head's getting.
Well, Trent lied to me.
Oh, did he?
He said there was a rerate at three, so we left at two fifty.
Trent is not, Trent is not a mother guy.
He tries every day, but he's never. That's why we get to golf so much.
I'm just a messenger.
Anything further, Village Manager?
No, I think that's it.
I'd like to make a comment. The weeds are gone off of Rockford and Plummer. Thank you very much. That's, that's awesome. So I think it just, the world of city is really pretty, and there's only so much we can do, but that just makes me feel better, everybody want to find out.
Man, that's, that's not easy for those guys out there in the traffic.
Oh, I have to imagine.
They didn't do it yourself.
Yeah, it seems like an easy thing for the rest of us. Of course, everything seems easy from the other side of the street. But yeah, I do appreciate that time to do that.
It, it does look a lot.
Yeah.